I would like to call to order the April 13th, or I should ask, and back, are we good back there? Sorry. Thank you. All right. All right. Now, I would officially like to call to order the April 13th, 2021, a regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public Schools. If you're able, please rise for the National, or the National Anthem for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll skip the anthem.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Laura, would you do the roll call, please?
Lewis?
Here.
Grandland?
Here.
Samurai? Mueller?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Palmer, here, and Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to our mission statement, which is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And in that light, we are going to start off, this is two meetings in a row, I think, with Highlander highlights. And this is a part of our meeting where we're able to just highlight some of the great things that are happening in our district, even amongst the challenges of COVID. Things are still happening, kids are still learning. And fun here in Columbia Heights is that art is still being produced. We are able to honor a couple of students who have gone above and beyond in their pursuit of visual arts this time. And I would like to introduce them and their teacher, Mr. Arnie Hamel. Is he on the meeting? Do we see him? I don't see them.
Madam Chair, they are not here.
They are not here. Should we just carry on? All right, let's carry on.
I have a PowerPoint of the two artworks, if you'd like to see those.
Yes, that'd be awesome. Thank you, Don. Well, she pulls it up. I'll tell you a little bit about the awards. It says, "Youth Art Month is hosted every year by Art Educators of Minnesota. Any member across the state is able to enter up to six student works. Traditionally, the works would then be on display at the Capitol, and there would be a reception in the rotunda. This year, the show was done virtually during the month of March." Sailor Stenvik, Columbia Academy, 8th grader, placed second with a colored pencil work entitled, "Green Man." And May Skaya, Columbia Academy, 8th grader, placed first with a watercolor painting entitled, "Forest Landscape." So there you see Mays. I'm sure you've been looking at them. Oh, there's Green Man. I finally got to see it. A little bit about what is Youth Art Month, and it says this, "Youth Art Month encourages support for quality school arts programs and promotes art material safety. The Council for Art Education administers the program at the national level. The programs provide a medium for recognizing skills developed through the visual arts experiences unlike any other curriculum subjects, including creative problems, problem-solving creativity, observation, and communication. And art shows and special exhibits fundraisers in schools and community activities take place annually throughout the month of March to celebrate visual arts in grades K through 12." So, there they are. What beautiful work. Any comments by any board members?
I mean, I tried to pick up watercolor last summer, and I, I mean, it's a really, really hard medium. So that is incredibly impressive. And Green Man is also impressive. I mean, they have, we have so much to be proud of. It's fantastic. Nice work.
Yeah, I'll echo what Mary said. I, just looking at those, I got chills. It just, like, it just resonated with me. It's just beautiful, just so well done. And I can just see their commitment to the work that they were doing and just, I wish they were online because they have just done a really nice job. Very, very great job.
Daddy?
Yeah, Molly. I'm sorry, I can't see your hands raised right now. There we are. Now I can see you again.
Okay. I just wanted to say congratulations to both of them. And also just to thank you to our wonderful art teachers in the district that, you know, create these opportunities and encourage all of that growth in art over the years. Obviously, these two are very talented, but they also clearly have some good support and direction from our, from our teachers. So thank you to them as well.
A special thanks to, again, their, their teacher, Mr. Hamel. We appreciate him. I know, I remember back when my kids had him, and they enjoyed art at the middle school. Anybody else? All right. Well, students, should you watch this on recording, we'll be sending you these certificates to have hang on your fridge, hang on your wall, wherever it is you want it. So thank you for representing our school so well and being our Highlander highlight for this week. We'll move on to the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, and we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved. Grandland?
Mary. Grandland?
Second.
Second. Molly. Discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Samurai? Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye. All right.
Palmer, aye.
Oh, sorry, Laura. That's right, you put yourself last. So thank you. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to the announcements. On April 20th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there'll be a school board work session here in the community rooms and via electronic means. On April 27th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. On May 11th, Tuesday at 5:45, there will be a school board community engagement listening session over Zoom. And then at May, on May 11th, same night at 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular school board meeting here in the community room and via electronic means. Move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence tonight?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence tonight.
All right. Thank you. We will move on then to communication to the board. This is the time where we'll begin with the citizens' employee representatives. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Do not see anyone here, so we will keep rolling. We'll move on to the consent agenda that contains the personnel report from 4/13/21 and school board meetings from 3/9/21 and 3/23/21 and 3/16/21. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
All right. Thanks. Lorian, second?
Second.
Molly, any discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
All right. Motion carries. Great. We'll move on to the, oops, sorry, to the, yep, discussion items. We'll do reports from members of the board. In an unprecedented move, I don't think I've done this in a while. Lorian, I'm going to ask you to go first.
All right. Thank you. It's been a little while since our last meeting, as we had the 5th and then the 4, first Tuesdays, we were not meeting. Since our last meeting, I have started attending the Minnesota School Board Association training, the Phase 3 training. So I did Part 1 of that last week. I also was able to attend virtually a synchronized swimming team meet. Just big shout out to everybody in activities and elsewhere who is able to coordinate the virtual synchronized swim meet. That was wonderful, as spectators are not permitted at those events. So it was great to see that online. I attended the chair meeting just prior to this meeting, also had conversations with Chair Severson and Member Lewis, and several parents and community members as well.
All right. Thanks so much. Move on to Molly.
Thanks, Daddy. Yeah, as much as it's been busy, I don't have a whole lot to report out on other than attending the, some of the NSBA conference that was held virtual over this last weekend. And last week, I also had some conversations with Superintendent Stenvik, as well as Member Mueller, and many conversations with community members. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. We'll move on to Mary.
Sure. I was able to attend the NSBA conference, which Director Palmer and I had a wonderful conversation about just some of the classes that we were attending and things that we wanted to sort of, you know, take back to our district from that. I attended a PTO meeting since I was last able to report. I was planning on attending the Fridley City Council meeting yesterday, but it was canceled relatively last minute. And then I was able to talk with many parents and community members.
All right. Thank you. Move on to Laura.
Boy, I actually had many, many, many meetings on Zoom. I'll start out with the 9/16 board meeting. We did appoint and hire a new superintendent. Connie will be leaving after many, many years in the district. And the one we chose to fill her shoes is Val Ray Bowe, who has been with the district also for many years. She was the, was the principal over at Carner Blue, and now she, then she became the Director of Special Education, and we look forward to working with her. She'll be starting the beginning of July. So very exciting news. We finally got through all that. I also attended the NSBA conference, and Mary, thank you so much for the conversation. It was, it was really great to be able to be excited about all the great topics that we were learning about. Interesting format, but definitely, definitely worth the time. Also, thank you Superintendent Stenvik for, for the very long telephone call. I really appreciate that. I, I, I'm really excited about some of the opportunities that we have going forward in the future, and I think that should pretty much tie, tie things up for me. So, anyway, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'll, I'll give you my quick update. I have also been able to talk to community members. We had a chair meeting prior to this meeting. I also spoke with Member Mueller, and I also attended the NSBA conference and look forward to sharing things that I also took away. I sent Superintendent Stenvik copious emails about my thoughts, and I appreciate you receiving them. We're yet to have any sort of meaningful dialogue really on it, but we're getting there. We're going to schedule something and talk a little bit more about it. So, yeah, we will, we've got it, we've got it. I gave you the highlights and the emails and the chair meeting, but I'm excited to have a little bit more time to talk. And of course, talk to all of you. If you have ideas you would like, you can relay those through Superintendent Stenvik. Yeah, I think I covered all my bases there. All right. Superintendent Stenvik?
Madam Chair, members of the board, of course, we were all very saddened to hear of the death of our former Columbia Academy student, Dante Wright. And I do want to thank all of the staff who came together to support each other and our students during this time. On Thursday and Friday last week, our staff participated in many different professional development sessions led and organized by the Teaching and Learning Department, very successful and exciting learning happening. And it's very hard to believe, but yesterday we started Quarter 4 of this school year, which meant some additional students returned to in-person learning, and we also continue to have students learning from home. We continue to monitor the daily COVID case rates, and the local case rates have risen compared to a couple of weeks ago. So we're counting on our mitigating strategies of masking, sanitizing, physical distancing, regular testing for staff, and folks staying home if they're not feeling well. That would be, that's, you know, those are all the ways that we can help continue to have onsite learning. I was able to have conversations with various board members, and I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. And I do look forward to hearing the highlights from the NSBA conference. It's not usual that we have so many board members who are able to attend, but in this virtual format. So it's pretty exciting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to Director Hennickens and Executive Director Niemwey, and it looks like also Director Tuckrell and Director Stunkel. We've got, we've got the whole host of Highlanders here tonight, along with Principal Sasek, for the North Park School for Innovation branding update.
Thank you, Chair Severson. I will be sharing my screen.
Bono, did you hear that? Director Hennickens is sharing his tonight.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Director Hennickens, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Just barely. Is your microphone working?
How about, how about now?
There it is.
Yes, yes.
There it is.
All right. Sorry, as I was, I was trying to say, I'm, I'm doing this remotely and the computer locally because we have a video, and it's a little more challenging this way, but I think the video will play better. Go ahead, Bono.
Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the board. We are here tonight with a few members of our district, Jen Hasworth, Stan Maraz, Principal Sasek, Director Anakin, Director Tuckrell, and Director Stunkel. And we are here to provide you an exciting update on the branding work that has been taking place at North Park School for Innovation as part of our sustainability effort. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Tonight's presentation encapsulate all our core values. So this is an informational presentation for the board, and there are no governance questions. And I will pass it on to Director Stunkel.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, we're so pleased this evening to be able to share with you the, not only the title, but the image and the tagline for North Park School for Innovation. And the taglines being STEM, of course, science, technology, engineering, and math, creativity and sustainability, and a beautiful image to the left that will now be the image for North Park School for Innovation. So many people's vision and efforts and, and time have gone into really developing this, this title, these taglines, and this image. And now it's, we are in the process of changing over. You never know how many places you see the name of a school until you have to change it, whether it's actually on the facade of the building, above the door, on the marquee, on signature lines and emails, on voice messages, on Instagram and smores. So all of those are in the process of being turned over. Many have already changed, but after, certainly after tonight, even more so. The Director Hennickens has assured me that above the front door, the sign has already changed, and that the marquee will be in the process of changing tomorrow. So we're very much in the thick of this. But I think it's, it's a beautiful name that really reflects the vision for the school. And we'll go to the next slide that will actually take us to the introductory video for North Park School for Innovation.
Welcome to North Park School for Innovation, where we focus on science, technology, engineering, and math with sustainability and creativity at its core.
One of the things that's most exciting at the new, in the new spaces for North Park School for Innovation is that each space is really intentionally designed for what the students are learning within it. So if you are in the art studios, you're really in a space that has the layout and the materials and all of the functions you need for that. Creativity is where our students get the idea of that process over product, that it's more important to do the work to get there than it is to have the final product.
So with STEM, you know, the science and the math pieces fit together really nicely and always have, because math is the language of science. And the magic really comes in with the engineering part, because that's where creativity and science really meet for our students, as they learn the engineering design process, like to learn how to solve all of the problems that are befelling our society today.
Some things that we're doing here are so innovative. We have a biodigester that's taking our food scraps and turning it into energy, and turning it into food for our plants. We have our solar system that we're expanding or have expanded. We have rain gardens and a great edible schoolyard that the children have access to. So there's so many things that we're doing that are kind of leading the way for them to become citizens of, of the earth.
Invite you to come and join our caring community where everyone is a learner. At North Park School for Innovation, where we focus on STEM, creativity, and sustainability in order to prepare our students to become the problem solvers of the future.
And next, we'll hear from Principal Sasek and Jen Hasworth.
Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board, good evening. Thanks for having us this evening. This is, this is actually really exciting stuff for us. You know, the, the brand shifting and the marketing pieces are really exciting. I think the three of us that are about to present the next few slides, what we really get excited about are our deliverables and what we're delivering to students every single day. And, and we've really gotten started in November, and then just this past week, we had a professional development opportunity for our entire staff. And it was led by Lee Schmidt, who's worked with our Science Department in the past. But Lee is, is an expert across the state with developing STEM schools. And, and the reason we chose Lee is because Lee really is a strong believer in integration. And the kind of STEM programming that we want to create is not having a STEM block at some point in the day, or having, you know, just simply a STEM curriculum that we deliver for an hour a day or a couple hours a week. But we want to integrate STEM into everything that we do. And that's quite an undertaking. And that's something that we definitely need help with, and Lee has been wonderful in leading our way, leading the way for us. One of the pieces that we are adopting, however, is going to be Project Lead the Way curriculum. And Jen Hasworth is, is going to speak a bit about that. She's our local expert.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, we are very excited through a grant this year. We're able to add Project Lead the Way, Lead the Way as one of the building blocks for North Park STEM programming. And if you're not familiar with it, it is, like I said, a STEM program. It's for elementary. It starts at pre-K through 5, pre-K, which is very exciting, and goes through grade 5. And they consist of modules that integrate all the four components of STEM. They're highly collaborative, students working together all the time and always with hands-on activities. And in addition, allow students to really grapple with real world problems that they can connect with. At the end of each module, the, it culminates with a problem for students to solve using the engineering design process. It's referenced in the video earlier. One powerful component of Project Lead the Way is that the modules have a strong literacy component, and each module kicks off with a read aloud story that is built on throughout the entire module. And each student has their own learning log where they journal their ideas, their questions, charts, and all their new learnings. So our journey with professional development with Project Lead the Way started with Desa, myself, and two North Park teachers, Katie Hale and Dr. Carolyn Bang. And we attended Project Lead the Way launch teacher training in the fall. We did that virtually over a couple of weeks. And during that training, we were able to experience the modules both as a teacher and as a student. And being in that student seat really helped us kind of envision what we could expect in the classroom and how we might think about how it's going to best fit with our particular group of students and our learning environments. Then, after that training completed, Dr. Bang and Katie piloted, each piloted a module in February and March of this year. And I checked in with them to get a couple of their quick takeaways for how it went. Obviously, some bumps in the road with something like this in this kind of environment. They both started remotely teaching, and then Katie was able to move her class into in-person, where Dr. Bang stayed with her remote learners. So not the ideal way to launch something new. But duck back to the takeaways, Dr. Bang shared that the Project Lead the Way was a blur-the-lines blend of literacy, the arts, and STEM, which fits beautifully into North Park Schools. For STEM to be truly integrated and not an add-on. And Katie shared with me that students ask questions continually from the beginning through the middle, all along the way. That really enhanced their learning along the process as well as their final projects. And that connects, again, well with the professional development we're doing with Lee Schmidt. It's all about student questions and having them drive their learning. We, Jeff, Desa, Tara, and I are so appreciative of the courage that these two teachers took to take this on during such a challenging time. And we've learned so much from them to make improvements on it, to build on. The next steps in professional development for Project Lead the Way will be for Desa and I to attend some Train the Trainer training this summer in June. Following that training, Desa and I will be able to train the rest of the staff. So we'll do our own in-house training with Project Lead the Way. And that will take place, the plan is currently to offer one of the trainings in August and another one during workshop week in September. And this will really set teachers up with the professional development and support that they need in order to implement at least one Project Lead the Way module in the 21-22 school year. And we're also in the process of selecting Project Lead the Way modules for, for next school year, and not only making sure that they align with Minnesota State standards, but that they have an environmental focus. We know that is so important to be pointing the arrows in that direction. Like I said, we're very excited to be bringing Project Lead the Way to North Park.
And then, which brings us to the creativity piece. And this is, this is a work in progress right now. I'm working with our specialists, with, you know, Vicky Denzer and Mike Welch and Ariane Kokish, to figure out how we're going to integrate STEM into our arts programming. And they have been actually very active participants in our professional development with Lee Schmidt, and they will continue to be. And in this upcoming summer, there's going to be a lot of heavy lifting by a few teachers, and, and Mike and Ariane will be among them in developing curriculum that's going to not just support standards alignment, but the integration piece. Because I think one, one of my big takeaways that I got from Katie Hale, when she finished her Project Lead the Way module, was, you know, she said, you know, we didn't have, you know, like a reading block per se during the week that we did most of the instruction. She said, but I taught reading in Project Lead the Way every single day. You know, I taught summarizing, I taught inferences. And so really what she did is she taught standards. And she said that she came away not feeling 100% confident because she didn't feel like she was explicit enough. And that's simply because we haven't integrated the curriculum yet. And so that's what we're going to spend time doing this summer, and that's where a lot of the creativity piece is going to come in. And which will bring us to the sustainability slide.
All right. So it was just about a year ago, I brought this to the school board, this conversation about sustainability and the work that we were doing district-wide. And in that conversation, there was a focus on the work at North Park, particularly on the last item, the biodigester. But we've been able to complete some of the items that we were in progress at that time, and I just kind of wanted to talk about that a little bit. It's obviously fitting right in with, with the work that's being done in the branding of the school. And so we've added additional 26.4 KW solar panel with the solar panels. You see the image to the right. The new solar panels are actually the ones in the back corner. So that's the new array that we've implemented. The ones that are in the front of the picture were implemented prior. And so we've done with the remodel of that building, we've done a lot also with energy efficiency, LED lighting was completed throughout the building. We've done new windows. You know, those that know roofs know that that looks like a brand-new roof across the whole building. And so there was some energy efficiency that came along with that as well. Below that image, you see a graph of, or an image of, below the solar panel image, the top of the roof is the environmental benefits. So this is just the environmental benefits calculation that the, it's a simple formula that the EPA puts together. So it takes the amount of energy that the solar panels have produced and puts it into a formula of looking at CO2 and trees planted factor. And it tells you what CO2 emissions have been saved and the equivalent trees planted. So we can track that through the energy-produced graphs that we get online from our solar panels. And this shot is just, so since December with that formula, we've saved the equivalent CO2 emissions of 6,000 or just under 7,000 pounds and equivalent trees planted at just under 52 trees. So that's again, something that we can track along the way. We also see, you know, the energy efficiency in the sense of our energy savings in the sense of, you know, our bills. And so there's definite benefits to these solar panels. And of course, again, as mentioned a couple of times now, the biodigester. And I'll leave Jeff and his team to really talk about the curriculum that goes along with that. But it was incredibly exciting to, you saw it in the video, to finally have the biodigester on site. It was a year-long process from when former superintendent myself started having conversations with Waste Energy Canada and visited an actual biodigester in use and to get it to actually being implemented into North Park and working within the building now and our compostable waste going into it. So with that, I think I'll just move forward and let the team talk more about it.
Yeah, and the little graphic you saw below, the photo of the roof at North Park, that information, we're going to be getting very similar information on the biodigester here soon. It'll be updated monthly and it's going to be really focused on the amount of carbon that we, the shrinking of our carbon footprint. And I believe it'll be measured in wheels off the road. Wheels that won't be coming to North Park to collect our garbage or to collect our compost any longer. And also the carbon savings that we're going to create by using essentially our garbage to heat our building once we have our boiler system in place. And, you know, the biodigester coming in was, it was exciting. It was a lot of fun. I don't know if Director Henneken's shared any photos. It fit barely. We had about three sixteenths of an inch on either side of clearance getting through the door. And it's a lot bigger than I imagined it would be. And it works really quickly. And right now, we spent the last few weeks and probably the few weeks in front of us really trying to master the machine itself. Right now, we're trying to get the product to the level of quality where we want it. It does take some time to get the microbial community, you know, working at the highest level. And it is actually hardwired into, I mean, to put it simply, into the internet system. And every weekend, we have diagnostics teams in Vancouver and Dublin that are taking a look at it and making adjustments for us and communicating with us. And these are all really cool things, that we have cool tools and stuff like that. But and while it's the right thing to have these tools, the real reason we have it is so that we can teach our kids. And so every single carbon-saving device that we have, we are, have and are continuing to create curriculum around it. And really, I'm going to let the true experts in that area, Jen Howsworth and Stan Maraz, to take it from here, to describe, in short, some of the things that we have in store for our students.
Thank you, Principal Sasek. Good evening, everyone. Two of my favorite subjects, the environment and education, and I'm honored to be here. In the past, we've spent the first two days of our school year really focusing with the environment in mind. So we create this positive mindset with every child that is there K through, or pre-K through fifth grade. And they come into the science lab and we talk about composting and recycling with the primary focus being in the cafeteria. Because I only get to work with the third, fourth, and fifth grade. But every child eats, every child goes to the cafeteria. So we really focus on recycling school-wide, but primarily on the cafeteria with composting and recycling. So it's a station that we set up. And Mr. Sasek has told me that, you know, we're going to shut down the science lab and turn it into a sustainability lab for the first few days. And then along with that, another station has always been with our agricultural specialist. And currently, that's Mr. Wes Neutrin. And he loves it too, because he will be in the courtyard garden. And every student will go visit him as well. And it just gives him a jumpstart at building relationships and getting to know every single child with an engaging and fun activity where they get to be outside and explore the courtyard garden and all that it has to offer. But what's really exciting now with the biodigester coming into North Park is we're going to be expanding those stations. So we've met several times and we're thinking that we're going to try to go for a whole week on sustainability. And so it's just going to be really engaging, fun activities for the kids to go explore. And we're bringing along some other community members, which I'll share with you in a little while, to help us out. But definitely, the biodigester will be one of the stations that will be probably the most exciting for them to see. Our new friend that is helping us become a very sustainable school. And I'm willing to bet within, and maybe we're already there, Mr. Sasek, but I believe that North Park will be the greenest school in the nation. And because we're just, we're just moving so quickly and it's really exciting.
Yes, thank you, Stan. We are going to use that September kickoff and those stations to really generate a lot of excitement about the biodigester and the other sustainability efforts at North Park. And to really spark a lot of curiosity and questions from students. Then in the classroom and in the science lab, we'll take those questions that the students have and do some digger, dig, some deeper digging into those topics. And that can be through investigations, through research, through reporting. And again, really incorporating all those pieces of STEM, the science and literacy as well. And making it multi-dimensional and cross-curricular. Really want students to, we want students to start to make those connections between what they're seeing, the sustainable components and practices at North Park, and their own roles as individuals and members of the North Park community in those efforts and their effect on these efforts. And see that what they're doing is really making a difference. And that if they can make a difference here at North Park, they can expand that into their community and in the world. And really building that identity of themselves as a global citizen and a caretaker of the earth. Again, starting small and expanding their aperture with that. We are going to go back to Stan to talk about some of our partners we are developing along the way.
Thank you, Mrs. Howsworth. One thing that we've really been excited about as we've been on this environmental journey, and I think as the board, you'll appreciate this, is it's been basically a zero cost to the district. And one reason is because of the collaborating that we're doing. One of our best friends happens to be the recycling program specialist at Anoka County. Her name is Katie Stelsner. And Katie has been a key player as far as getting grant money for us, like the new trays that we have in the cafeteria, the recycling and composting bins, the stainless steel utensils. No longer are we using single-use plastic in our cafeteria. Maybe now we are because of COVID. We'll get back to it. We're eventually going to go to bulk milk, so we won't have all that carton waste. And sharing, share carts. So she's been able to find funds for us and continues to do so. So she's been a huge part of our partnerships that we pride ourselves in. She also has been in the classroom and she's come to the science lab. And the kids just love it when she comes and shares some of her passions with us and teaches us about, more about recycling, composting, and being a sustainable school. Another community partner that has been a key player is Rachel Workin. Rachel Workin is the environmental planner for the city of Fridley. She and we hope Katie will both join us with our week-long kickoff in September with stations on renewable energy and some other things that we're working with them on. And she too has been at North Park in the classrooms, working with our science students. So and will help us do a really exciting event coming up. For Earth Day, I'm planning on doing Adopt a Drain with as many kids as we can in their neighborhoods. So whether you live in an apartment building or a house, you have the opportunity to help keep our water clean. So we really want our kids to be not only stewards of the earth, but to be citizen scientists and really show that they can have a part. So she's really helping me in that as well. So it's been a fun journey with them, with both of them in developing some community partnerships. And they've introduced me to people too in the community that's helped us along our journey to of being stewards of the earth. All right, Sean, back to you.
Yes, we are building our own curriculum as we speak. And one of our partners in that work is Wes, our agricultural specialist right here in the district. And it's just been a blast to work with him and Stan and just brainstorm and come up with ideas. Was such an incredible expert, he's so good at what he does. And he's just got so many great ideas. And how we're connecting what is being done at Blooming Heights Edible Schoolyard, along with our own edible courtyard and thinking about all the waste that's generated, the organic waste that's generated from those gardens, which in turn can open up conversations about insect mitigation and those populations. So he's really made us stretch our thinking with how we could expand our curriculum into more than just the initial kickoff. He's definitely helping us out with that. But how we can continue to get back to the biodigester and our sustainable curriculum all throughout the year. So students really are solid in their understanding. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Tara.
Good evening, Chair Saverson, Superintendent Stenbik, members of the board. I think I have the easiest slide of all of them. But I think it's been amazing to hear. I know it's been a longer presentation, but we really put all the pieces together so that we could see that whole picture of North Park. So tonight was an informational presentation and there won't be any governance, as was mentioned earlier. But we are open to any questions or comments.
Well, thank you so much for the thorough presentation. I feel like we all know North Park very well, which is really great considering we really can't go there and see it right now. So thank you again for everyone who stayed this long to do this. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Look up over my screen. Yep, Laura, go ahead.
Oh, I'm like, I was in tears seeing the new video and everything. I mean, this has been a really long journey. Everybody's worked so hard. And at the beginning of it, I, I mean, I kind of saw where y'all were going. But you have just blown me away. It is so amazing. I, the kids are going to be, are so lucky to be able to have, to be able to have this opportunity to really, really learn in real-life applications. So thank you. And thank you, community, for passing the referendum. Because without your support, we wouldn't be here. I, I mean, granted, there were so many people that helped, but thank you. I mean, it's, it's, I can't wait to get over there and see it. Someday, maybe I can, right?
Thanks, Laura.
Yeah, Natty?
Yep, go ahead, Molly.
Thank you. I just want to commend everybody that's been involved. I feel like, you know, a dozen years ago, you knew where you were going already, even though some of this stuff wasn't here. But everything just lines up so well and it's incredible. I love hearing that it probably is going to be the greenest school in the nation. You guys have a lot to be proud of, so kudos to all of you. I love it.
Thank you, Molly.
Yeah. I, again, also thank you so much. It's wonderful to see all of the thought and hard work that has gone into creating this and fulfilling this vision. I've been watching it since before I was a school board member. So it's really sort of delightful to see all the pieces come together. And also, you know, kudos to all of you. I think that this is really the direction that schools should be going. So way to sort of usher us into this next chapter of, you know, sustainability and helping these scholars, you know, get a head start in that so that they can continue to share that with, you know, with others as they grow older. So thank you so much for all of that work. It's absolutely appreciated.
Thanks, Mary.
Lauren?
And just one quick comment for me. I continue to be impressed, and I want you to know that I appreciate the level of passion that comes across from each and every one of you every time you present. It just oozes from your pores that you are passionate about this project and the, what it can provide to our students. And it just, I think it provides a rejuvenation and kind of, you talk about sustainability, the growth, the new refreshed spirit that we have at North Park School for Innovation. And it's innovative. And you believe it and you sell it. And I think you'll get the students and their families excited about it. And to have kids and families excited about going to school and excited about learning and excited about doing new things, challenging things, different things that may seem hard, is to be commended. So thank you for your passion.
Thanks, Lauren, and that was kind.
Agreed with what, all the things that everyone said. And I'm super excited. We've been waiting for this for a long time and it's incredible to see it taking shape. And I love the concept. I do have a question, though. With all this great branding, with all the excellent things that are happening, and maybe this is a different presentation, so you can say, okay, that's a different presentation, Natty. But how do we get this out there? How do we let our community know what their dollars have paid for? What opportunities they have for kids? So how do we, how do we get this out to our community? And then how do we get this out to others in the area, others in the area who might be interested in a school that does focus on STEM creativity and sustainability? Is that this presentation, am I barking up the right tree?
Director Stunkel could certainly respond.
Okay, Director Stunkel.
Well, beyond the obvious things like press releases and pushing this out through our newsletter and those various methods, our social media and whatnot, the best advertising is for everybody that's on this school board meeting and watching this online to talk with your neighbors and your family and to share the great things that are happening at North Park and the great things that will happen at North Park. It's all about relationships. And North Park is so strong with the community building and relationships. And so it's people talking to people in addition to all of the obvious things such as press releases and, and social media and such. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just want people to know what a, what a great option they have up the hill, North Park.
I do believe that Principal Sasek is offering individual tours.
I do believe that Principal Sasek is offering individual tours for prospective students coming up. And I believe that the video will be linked to the website either this evening or tomorrow morning.
All right.
I have a question.
Okay, Laura, go ahead.
Have you considered doing a presentation either at MSBA or at the national conference?
I'll present anywhere where they ask me to present and they're willing to listen.
Answers that.
Absolutely. And actually, Director Stunkel and Director Niambwe and I have been working quite closely over the past few months to put together a rather thorough marketing plan. And there are actually many pieces to it and I do believe that that probably is a presentation for the future. But, you know, I know in the past, when we've done presentations at MSBA and in other places, you know, we've been fortunate enough to have been asked and it's certainly something I would never refuse.
Well, I think you've got a lot to show off and a lot to share. And I would love to see, I would love to see a spotlight. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for joining us. Again, feel free to bow out if that's the end of your presentation unless you want to stay on because we are about to move on to online learning. So I'd like to welcome Executive Director Niambwe and Director Takrol. And I will let you introduce your group.
I'm going to share my screen before we start. Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik and members of the board. We are here tonight and another group of excited district employees to bring to you some informational session about becoming an online learning provider. So Jennifer Asworth, Leslie Maher, Dan Roblinski and Director Takrol. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. The three core values that are represented in tonight's presentations are excellence, collaboration and innovation. Today, this presentation, again, it's an informational presentation and we plan to come back on April 27 to seek approval so that we can submit an application to become an online learning provider to the Minnesota Department of Education. A little context about becoming an online learning provider. It's a process that is governed by Statute 124D.095 and governed by the Department of Education. This process of becoming an online learning provider has a couple steps. The first step is to submit a letter of intent, which we have completed. The second step is completing an application which describe what we are proposing to do, the training we're going to provide for the adults, what the program will look like for students and also demonstrate how, over a period of three years, we can build this strong online learning program. Another step is that MDE has to approve this within 90 days after receiving the application. And then after that, they are monitoring the process of this newly designed program. So it's been very exciting to work with my colleagues who are presenting tonight. There is this dual track where we've engaged with our stakeholders in terms of asking them questions, doing surveys and showing that an online learning program is a benefit to the district and to the families. And then there is the added track where we've been collaborating internally with teachers and high school teachers as well as employees at the district. And this path started by us asking the question, why do we need an online learning program in our district? And so we've defined our why, we've refined it, we've gone and done some research, which you'll hear about in a few minutes here. And then we've refined the why and then we finally hit it. And we believe that we're providing flexibility and opportunity for our students. And right now, you can see the green top quadrant in front of me. We're still at that defining our boundaries. What do we want the program to look like? How will we serve the students and the families? And which teachers will participate? And how much money will that cost? So we're still making that progress into refining and designing. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Principal Roblinski to share the next part of the presentation.
Thank you and good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. Our goal tonight aligns with our mission, providing worlds of opportunity for our students. And our opportunity with online learning really aligns with that. And it gives our students this, as we went down the road of synchronous learning or asynchronous learning at the high school, we really developed and nurtured that process. And it's gained momentum at the high school with our students and our parents. And we've taken that momentum to improve students' academic experience. And we believe through this opportunity, we're able to spark student interest, staff interest, drive student engagement, foster the collaboration with staff and students. And this opportunity will give even more time for our students and staff to collaborate. And it also gives our teachers this, the possibilities of innovation in what a year ago, we weren't even sure what path we were going down. And today, we want to continue that momentum and reimagine the possibilities of attracting and exciting staff and students to engage in their academics.
Good evening, everyone. As you saw in a previous slide, we've already been doing some work on this program. And that work has been primarily focused around reflection and idea gathering. We've been taking advantages of opportunities to talk and have conversation with other districts around the state of Minnesota who are also looking into becoming online learning providers, looking at what other districts are looking into learning from districts that have gone before us and have already started work as an online learning provider. We've been asking what our stakeholders are looking for by doing some initial stakeholder surveys. We've been asking what are experts saying about online and hybrid programs by looking into the work of Dr. Katelyn Tucker and the National Standards for Quality Online Learning. And we've been recognizing and looking at the momentum that has already been building up in the Columbia Heights Public School District. As Principal Roblinski said, there's already a lot of work that's been done at the high school level and across our district to look at effective online instructional strategies. So we have a lot of momentum already built from distance learning, from our current heights from home model. We also have our Blended Learning Pioneer Program, which is a professional development coaching program in its third year, where we have a small group of teachers that agree to participate in coaching around blended learning or technology-rich instructional methods. So we have already some strengths that we're hoping to extend in this new opportunity. There is a big question now about what will this program look like? Again, we're currently in a stage of designing broad strokes design parameters, which are on the left-hand side. On the right-hand side, you see a lot of the future design work that we'll be doing moving ahead. As we've been looking at some of these broad stroke parameters, kind of where are the boundaries of our design? We've been making sure that we're grounding into our mission statement in Columbia Heights Public Schools of all belong, all succeed as we create a new opportunity for our learners. We are also trying to ensure that we're starting our design from a strong foundation by grounding into state standards, grounding into those national standards for quality online learning, taking advantage of the strengths of both hybrid environment and online environment, face-to-face environment, how can we design something that takes advantage of the strengths of all of those? And then as far as the initial scope, we are seeking to be wise and intentional with the scope and support as we launch this program for the first time. So we're starting small and we're starting from a stance of making sure that we're supporting all of the participants in our program, making sure that our students are supported, our teachers are supported, that everybody feels kind of well-prepared to try this new opportunity. On the right-hand side, like I said, you can see a lot of the future design work that we're going to be tackling as we continue to collaborate amongst each other with other stakeholders as we continue to develop and design our program and as we work through the application process for MDE. With that, I'll pass it to Jen Howesworth.
Thank you, Leslie. As Leslie mentioned, we are going to start small. So here we have a five-year projection. So as you see here, in year one, starting with grades 11 and 12, it's just a couple of classes to really give the most support we can to those teachers and students who are implementing this for the very first time. Then it continue in year two, still staying pretty small and just expanding the number of courses for those same grades, grades 11 and 12. By year four, we are looking to expand to the middle school. And then finally, our projection in year five is to have 12. And of course, this is Tara.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. So as we look ahead, we are looking at completing this application after we come to the board again to seek approval. So April 27th, we'll seek approval, we'll continue our focus groups and then complete the application. As we look at the presentation, online learning provider is a lot, is very different than distance learning or heights from home. We are learning from our heights from home and distance learning, but it is a very different type of learning environment. We know with the pandemic that we are continuing to watch it. And when we submit the application to MDE, we are going to make it very general. So if we need to have opportunities in the fall or if we choose to have opportunities in the fall for other grade levels or different groups, we are going to have that in our application, so we're able to cover that as well. So this really is looking at online learning as we look at a long-term online learning program for Columbia Heights, but we know that with the pandemic, we want to ensure we have opportunities. So when the application is submitted, it will be more general. So as we continue working on our path, we will continue to refine and expand and reflect in this process. So it's that continuous learning that we will continue to do as we expand into other grade levels. And with that, any questions?
Mary, I see that hand.
I'm curious with the online institute versus in-person students, is there a difference in the per pupil funding for those different modalities?
I can go ahead and answer it, Superintendent Stenvik, if you know, but no, there is not. It would still count. Currently, what we're looking at is students would have a blend right now of in-person classes and online classes. So it would expand opportunities for our students.
Wonderful, thank you. Other questions? Laura, I can't see you. Let me find you, see if you're unmuted.
I'm good. I have a lot of questions. I just don't know how to formulate any of them. But it looks good so far. I'm excited to see what the final application looks like.
All right, well, exciting. Director Niambwe, you opened by saying another excited group of district employees. I love that. I'm thankful for each of you and the previous group and the level of excitement you show for our students in a time where, I mean frankly, I would assume you'd be exhausted. So excited, I'll take it. I'll take it and run with that. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Yeah. All right, thank you so much for joining us tonight. We will move on to the Northeast Metro 916 Joint Powers Agreement.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik. This evening, I am here with, now I don't have your last name in front of me, Patrick, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Jacobson Schulte, there it is.
And sorry about that. And we've been members of 916 for Northeast Metro 916 for many, many, many years. And the Joint Powers Agreement goes back even further. And there's been some, there's a district that is planning on leaving Northeast Metro 916 and it was obvious that there is some obvious, there are some needed changes to the agreement as we looked at new members coming on and new members leaving. And so there's been a lot of conversation about that in the background and it seemed like a lot of that work is complete and it seemed like an opportune time to bring in 916, someone from Northeast Metro 916 to talk about that new agreement and those changes as an information item to the board this evening. As we move forward with that, because at some point, this will need to be brought to the school board for action item for approval. And with that, I think Patrick has a presentation and can take it from there.
Thank you, Brian. I just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Someone give thumbs up, great, thank you. Yeah, thank you. And I will go ahead and share my screen and walk you through a little bit of information. I'll look again there if someone, Brian, maybe I can see you. Can you tell me if you can see my screen? Good to go? Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for having me tonight. As Brian alluded, I'm here from Northeast Metro 916. I am the Executive Director of Finance and Operations. And tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Joint Powers Agreement proposed to various member districts. One of the key pieces inside of this that I wanted to touch on is the presentation tonight gives some context of the history, but then also really focuses on the financial side of this agreement. The overarching JPA as a whole is about an 11-page document, which kind of talks about all the legal pieces. It looks like a contract. One of the things that was my focus, because I've been at 916 now almost two years, and coming onboard, they started this work probably about three years ago and they were missing the financial component of that. So that's what I was really charged with by Superintendent Hayes. And when I came onboard, Connie, Superintendent Hayes and I talked a lot about this and then she made it her goal to try to finish this by the time she retires. And you heard tonight, you know, Board Member Palmer mentioned that we are now transitioning to a new superintendent as of July 1st and Connie Hayes will be leaving us at the end of June. So we're kind of trying to move this forward, knowing that that is our goal. Our goal is to try to get this approved by the various member boards, signed off and then returned so our board can approve it in June. If that is delayed, we understand. If there's more conversation that needs to happen, we're open to that. But that is the timeline we're following and I'll touch base on that at the end. But the current Joint Powers Agreement, and Brian had alluded to this, was adopted in 1969, so it's 52 years old. And since that time, there hasn't been any amendments or changes to that document. So as you can imagine, if you're looking at an agreement, a contractual agreement that we have between us and member districts, some of that language is just so old and archaic and unclear. And that really was the driving force. Besides having a member district, one of our member districts currently chose to leave and will be leaving at the end of this June, the other driving force behind it was the language was just unclear. And as we got into that situation and transitioning that member district out, it became apparent that it was unclear on both sides. So the focus really was around, how do we come together and find a way in which we can be more transparent in this process so that if a member district does choose to leave for whatever various reasons, they understand what that looks like and how they can do it? We wanted to make sure that there was success on both sides because 916 wants to be the partner of choice, but at the same time, understands that things change and districts evolve. And as that changes and evolves, we wanted to make sure people felt like they were able to kind of work through that and be able to work through that process. So the goal is to present a new Joint Powers Agreement that's been developed with consensus between all members regarding the impacts as we move forward. And I'll touch base on the timeline. as we move forward. And I'll touch base on the timeline and the process that we used to develop some of those pieces. The proposed new Joint Powers Agreement would apply to those members on the effective date of new agreement, and that would be July 1st. And the reason we put this in here was because we do have a current member that gave notice last February and is leaving as of this June 30th. We wanted to make the effective date of this July 1st. Because as we worked through the process of their transition out and trying to figure out the liabilities associated with them leaving, we didn't want them to feel bound to this new agreement, because previously they were bound to the old agreement when they gave notice. So we just set the date as of July 1st, moving it forward. With that, you know, one of the pieces that was most challenging for me walking into this and taking a look at it was, how do I balance both sides? And that was a key focus of mine. And, you know, I'm a representative of Northeast Metro 916 as the Executive Director of Finance. Of course, I have a vested interest in that entity as a whole, but also that entity is made up of all of you, all of our member districts, the 14 different member districts with the 14 different superintendents, 14 different business managers. So again, a lot of opinion. And as I approached this, I thought, what's the process with which I would want somebody in my shoes taking if I was a member district business manager? I would want to make sure I'm appropriately represented, thought about the process with which, how does it impact that member district? Not only as an option to leave as a member, but also what is the ripple effect of other members leaving the district? Because again, as we look at our cost structure and we're financed, you know, through state funding, but also through member district funding, if one of the districts leaves, the denominator gets smaller. All of a sudden, those costs are divided by 13 instead of 14. And what does that mean for the remaining school districts? So I wanted to try to make sure we could smooth that transition of costs over that period of time to be able to assist the remaining members to make sure that we had continued success and investment in what we were doing. With that, one of the things that Connie Hayes, Superintendent Hayes and I talked a little bit about was, you know, how long individuals had been a member. And for Superintendent Hayes, when we initially talked about it, she said, well, if they haven't been a member very long, then part of that is that should, yeah, there shouldn't be a whole lot of work that we need to do in relation to it. And I thought, and I kind of flipped it the other way. And I said, well, the reality for me is, is members that have been committed to 916 over an extended period of time really have vested interest in 916 success. They have paid for, their equity's been paid into 916 in ways that has helped 916 be successful. And with that, I wanted that to be the foundation of how we designed this financial liability obligations and giving credit to those institutions that have been a member. Like Brian said, Columbia Heights has been a member of 916 for 20 years. It'll be 21 years this next fiscal year going into it. So with that, I wanted to make sure we were valuing those long-term partnerships and looking at it and saying, well, well, because a member's only been a member for five years, they should be able to get in and get out quickly and not worry about the liabilities. Well, that didn't really make a lot of sense to me, because again, you know, it kind of created an incentive for a new member to come in, stay for a few years and leave, and now the expense and burden goes then to the remaining members that have been there a long time. And I used it the other way. I kind of flipped it, and I'll walk through and how I designed the equity vesting plan associated with that in relation to years of service. So with that, the vesting schedule decreases the obligation of existing districts with each year of continued membership. So as members continue and persist on and continue to be members, each year of that process moves them closer to reducing, they're increasing their equity and reducing any liability if they were to leave at that point in time. With that, we took a look at the withdrawal, the statement inside, and the current structure that we use, it's a little bit unclear. So we try to follow state statute associated with this, where the notice must be given on or before February 1st and shall be effective June 30th of the calendar year following the notice, so that the following June 30th. So if it was, I'm going to use Columbia Heights as an example. If you all as a board decided tonight, well, we don't know that we want to be a member of 916 anymore, you could give notice now, which would be prior to the February 1st deadline of next year. But then you would be a member all of the following year until the following June 30th. So it's not if I give notice on January 31st, that same year, June 30th is not the end period, it's the following year, June 30th. So it's about an 18-month window with which notice is given and approved, and then the transaction takes place. And that was a little confusing to the current member district that is leaving. When they gave notice, they were assuming June 30th was the end of some of their obligations. But really, that process was an 18-month window as we looked at areas like safe schools, long-term facilities maintenance, and lease levy obligations on their part. So we broke this down into four pieces, and I'll talk about each of these four pieces to help you kind of understand how we wrapped our head around this. One of the things I do want to note is, through this process, and I talk about a timeline at the end, but we started this process in January. We pulled everybody together as business managers, started to have conversations around this. And part of that, the challenge there is to say, how do you get 14 different business managers from various member districts in a virtual meeting like this, and then have everybody give consensus? And it was quite a challenging task to think how to do that. So what we did was we pulled together a subcommittee, which represented various areas to be able to assist. So we had members from South Washington County, from Fridley, a member from Centennial, and a member from White Bear Lake that were advising me as a subcommittee on this process. And as we continued our work, we would then report that back to the business managers and met with them and shared that information to give them an idea of what we designed. The first piece we looked at was our long-term employment obligations. So one of the things, over the course of the 50 years of 916 being an entity, was as we took on new members and grew as a district, as a demand for our services were growing and more students were coming to us, of course, we had to hire new employees to be able to assist and teach those students that were coming from all of our member districts, Columbia Heights included. And with that, as we hired new people, we had continued severance and liability associated with hiring those individuals, whether it was OPEB liability or taking a look at what others' long-term severance liabilities we had associated with them. And while we've worked to kind of diminish the size of those and the growth of those going forward, so we won't see our long-term obligations in OPEB grow over time, it still kind of has a tail, right? We're finishing it out, and as we go through that process of finishing it out and paying it down on a yearly basis, one of the key pieces we built in here was to say, we want that OPEB liability and other severance liability to be something that is a liability for all members, even those leaving. And what would that look like? So what we proposed on this design is to say that there would be a one-year commitment, our one-time allocation equal to the amount of the last three years' benefit payments average, multiplied by the existing different districts' percentage of 916 student body. It's a lot of words. If you look at bullet point three, you'll see a calculation, which I think makes it a little bit easier to understand, is to say, each year in our audit, you can look and see what we paid for benefit payments as far as severance. We take the last three years of that inside of our audit, you know, add them all together, divide by three. We then multiply that by our exiting district percentage of 916 student body. That percentage is based off your lease levy certification, the adjusted pupil unit you have in your lease levy certification that comes to us. It's what we use every year to calculate what the lease levy amount's going to be, and we submit that to MDE, and then Brian's aware, and he goes forward, and that's your lease levy obligation then to 916. So we're using audited financial data, so the data that anybody could get, any one of you can kind of go back and look and say, what does 916's audit tell us of severance payments? And then what's our student body percentage, which is going to change over time? And we wanted to make sure it wasn't fixed, but it was something that was adjusting over time, associated and utilized currently for the financial structure around our leases. So again, it's a one-time obligation to be able to offset that for that one-year period. The second piece, this is where the equity vesting schedule comes into play, was based on the exiting district's number of years as a contributing member to the debt service schedule, that district will be liable for, again, a one-year allocation due to commence at the point of severance, based on the vesting schedule. So if you look at this, there's a percentage and a scale. If a member, vesting payment percentage requirement, if they were a member for, say, seven years, they fall between that zero and 10-year window, which means they're still liable for 100% of what their current year debt service obligation would be. Just on a one-time allocation, this is not an ongoing. Because when you look at Northeast Metro 916, one of the things that we've done on behalf of our members is we've gone out on certificates of participation to build our buildings. So if you look inside of our audit, you'll see that our debt service obligations is about $75.4 million. And so we heavily leverage our member districts' release levy to pay that debt service. And so as a member's leaving, we're saying, well, there's some obligation there. You should pay an additional year of that based on these percentages. And then we would adjust that inside of our debt service for our member districts to help buy that down and transition that adjustment over to your lease levy over the course of time. Noting that Columbia Heights earlier in the presentation has been a member for 20 years, you'd see right now you'd be currently obligated for 75% of that. End of this academic year, rolling into the next one, you'll move to 21, and you'll actually be liable for 50% of that. So what you're paying currently in your lease levy is about $313,000 a year for your lease levy. If it was that you gave notice in the next year, that would adjust down to 183 based on this design. So it's covering just a portion, but also giving you credit for the fact that you've been a member for 21 years. So we use that again as a calculation, the existing or exiting member current year lease levy obligation, which is what you're paying this year, times the percentage member vesting payment percentage. So again, as you persist over time, and if you're a member for another 10 years and you move into that 31 range, it will adjust it down to 25%. The reason I use this scale was because as we looked at our member districts, the average number of years for our members is 25.63 years. So that had to be a number that extended almost the length of time that we've been a district or an intermediate school district, because as I adjusted and said, well, if you've been here longer than 20 years, you should have no obligation. Well, that was everybody. So again, all of a sudden, it would set us back in 916, and we've got to make sure we're covering that debt service as we go forward. And this was the trickiest piece of our old agreement. If you look at our old agreement, it references something called Chapter 775, Section 6, Subdivision 3, which all that really does is lead you into something that says, a member district that chooses to leave 916 or an intermediate, doesn't say 916, but an intermediate school district, is still obligated for their bonded indebtedness, which is unclear, right? And I know, in referencing that to MDE, I couldn't get clear guidance on what that meant. And instead of leaving that gray, this is our design around how do we make sure we understand what that looks like? And so with that, each year, I will go through and calculate after we finish our audit, which we complete, you know, by December and submit. And once we get a board-approved audit, I will go through and calculate this for our member districts and provide that to the business, member district business manager and superintendents. You have some idea of what does our scorecard look like? What would it mean if we made a decision? So that can be presented to a board if needed at any point in time to say, what would it mean if we decided to leave 916 from a financial standpoint? The third piece is our current liability. So the first one was looking at long-term liability and severance. The second was our debt service. So again, another liability associated with debt. And the third is a current liability release, which really is our overhead structure. Right now, each of our member districts pay a membership fee on an annual basis, which we invest in our administrative structure as a whole, overseeing and oversight. Because like I said before, we get some funding through state and the other areas that we have to lean on as our member districts for tuition billing and other sources to be able to offset that difference. And with that, we wanted to take into consideration, again, the associated overhead costs with that administration and looking to a one-year, a single-year allocation of membership fee, times that adjusted pupil unit, as stated before, then times your vesting schedule. So again, in Columbia Heights example, we'd say, what is your current year membership fee? What is your adjusted pupil unit based on the lease levy certification? And then what's your member vesting percentage, which I said was 75%, but will be moving to 50% this July 1st. So into that next section, you'll be looking at 50%. And that would tell you then what that payment is on a one-time basis to be able to offset this difference. With that, we wanted to, you know, we kind of wrestled with the idea of, is it a multi-year payment? Is it a one-time payment? And we, as 916, remain extremely cognizant of the fact that each business manager at our member districts, resources are scarce for everybody. So in taking a look at that and where these obligations were going to come from, we wanted to make sure that we could be a partner in assisting this process as well to make sure it wasn't such a large number that no member could ever choose to leave because the number would be overwhelming or that it would be overwhelming over a period of three or five years. But yet, we wanted to make it enough that it would assist us in a transition period over a one-to-two-to-three-year process. And I talk at the end about a mutually agreed-upon timeline where it could be paid over multiple years if need be. The fourth piece that we added in here, which doesn't apply to Columbia Heights, but will give you some context, is if we have future member withdrawal fee. So with that, not that 916 is out soliciting and looking for any new members, but if they were to add any new members in the future, we're building into this Joint Powers Agreement that if they come onboard and they are members for anything under a six-year period, they will be subject to a one-time fee associated with $50 times their adjusted pupil unit. Because again, one of the things we want to try to design and make sure is that other districts that are considering 916 don't just come in for a three-year period, utilize the buildings, the wonderful resources that we have that you all as members have paid for, and then turn around and leave quickly without any other obligation associated to the financing of it. So this $50 times the adjusted pupil unit is something we've taken in and putting into this new agreement. And we followed pretty closely through our process of this development. What was designed by Intermediate 287 after they went through their withdrawal with Bloomington, right? It was a very long, very expensive kind of divorce between the two of them, looking at who owes what, what, based on their liabilities? And our goal here was to say, we are in partnership together. We want to remain in partnership together. And as you look at this, you have an idea of what the information is to be able to choose whether you stay working with 916 or not into the future. And again, it's on us to continue to be the partner of choice and provide that for you, which we think we will, but also wanted you to understand, because that was the first question I got from so many different business managers. What does it even look like, Patrick, for us to leave? I don't even know how to conceive that. I don't know what it would look like. This is our goal, is to be able to design that and say, this is what it would look like if you chose to leave from a financial standpoint. So board members, like all of you, can make a decision to say, we now understand what that means if we choose to make a change. The last piece, as I noted, was just taking a look at mutually agreed-upon payments over an effective number of years, three years of effective date of withdrawal. Our goal here is not to turn into being, you know, chasing an account payable and trying to get dollars. We're hoping through this process and being transparent and open with the data and where the resources are that you can get the data or audit from MDE, that this would be something that we can transact on in a timely fashion collectively together. But if that doesn't happen, because sometimes it doesn't, we also built in a prime lending rate plus 2% if it goes beyond that one year, if there's not a mutually agreed-upon decision. We're just putting that in as a safeguard on our end to say, if a district decided to leave and was disgruntled and there was a lot of time associated with it, we just wanted to make sure, because we want to do right by the taxpayers' dollars that all of you are using, and make sure that we're getting those back into offsetting the costs for each of you as member districts. With that, the timeline, we developed this working group, met in January and worked through March. We presented this to the member districts' finance or business managers on March 4th. Then we did a presentation on March 17th for the superintendents. Now our goal is this, meeting with and talking with various member district boards, having you review the presentation. Brian will bring to you in the future the actual document, which you'll probably do. I don't know if you do a first reading and second reading, but it'll provide that document to you for a first reading, second reading. And then if you do move forward as a board and adopt it, we'll have an individual from your board sign it and getting that back to us. Our goal is to try to get that completed by our June board meeting, so that 916's board can approve it and implement it July 1st. And again, knowing that that timeline is aggressive, we understand if there are additional questions and timelines do lag, we're hopeful we can continue to move in that direction. So with that, I know it was a lot of information, and, you know, I probably talked a lot quicker than many people can comprehend, but I just wanted to make sure to kind of give you some context of what we looked at. Our goal here truly was to continue to be a partner and work through this and helping both sides understand what does it mean for each of us and also our existing member districts if another district decided to leave in the future. With that, I will stop sharing my screen, and I will open the floor if there are any questions anyone have for me at this time.
Do you guys have any, Lauren?
Just real quick, more for Brian. Can we get this information in our packet as appropriate so that we can take a look at it before approving? It was a lot of information, so I'd like to look back through that again. And then is there anything in place now? We know that there's the one district who's leaving. Is there any kind of financial obligations for that district at this point? And is it just not to this level or this spelled out? just not to this level or this spelled out?
Yes, that is correct. There is a financial obligation. The issue we have there is because it's under the old joint powers agreement. It's unclear and it's kind of gray. It's just that bonded indebtedness. So now what's happening with that situation is we are working with their attorney and our attorney to try to figure out what that looks like. And so the goal with this is to try to help avoid some of that and have that information out front in advance. So if it was that any existing member district was to choose to leave in the next year or next five years, they would understand what that is ahead of time without it turning into a very expensive kind of legal back and forth between, I think you owe me this and you think, you know, we don't owe that, right? And so our whole goal here is to kind of decrease that obligation in relation to legal fees and time.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Xena and Brian. I think just you're having our attorneys look over this joint powers agreement. Director Hannigan?
Okay. No, no offense, Patrick, but yeah.
Absolutely. I think that, you know, when you draft a document of 11 pages, I think it's absolutely appropriate to have your attorney. Jay Squires was our attorney who helped us draft it. I don't know if that's who you use or not, but that, you know, we use Jay to help guide this as well.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment too, because we did actually have a very thorough discussion about this at our last board meeting over at 916, which was good because I dropped, my internet went during your presentation. So I was like, well, at least I've already seen this. But one of the things that you did stress is that we're going to be looking at our joint powers agreement on a yearly basis because it is 52 years old. But this was the most pressing matter. So you're doing constant revisions to make sure that everything is, everybody's in agreement that this is fair.
Yes, thank you, Laura. That is absolutely correct. That is something we built in was a timeline of an annual review and knowing that it may not, we may not amend it every year, there might not be amendments to it, but at least it's a living document that we're looking at with the member districts, business managers on an annual basis so that if there are things that we need to change or things we feel aren't working, we can address that. Yeah, 52 years of kind of shelving this and not looking at it is just not a healthy way for anybody to move forward with their contract.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Mary.
I mean, I guess I didn't realize that members could leave. Like, I didn't think that that was a thing that happened. How frequently do members leave the intermediate school districts or go in between?
Well, and I've only been at 916 for two years. And so we do have one this that came up, but prior to that, I don't know that it's all that often, Mary. You know, I said the average membership of our members now is like 25.63 years. So they've been, most have been here and stayed here. I do think there has been one or two maybe previous to that that came in and left and then came back and joined again. But it's not, it's not very often. It seems like when people do join as members, they tend to stay, given the longevity of our membership.
For sure. Thank you so much.
I can actually even elaborate on that just a little bit more. Since I've been on the 916 board, we've actually had two members leave. Two members leave, the one currently that's leaving. And actually Hudson, Wisconsin was actually a member for a brief period of time. Forest Lake had left years ago, but they have come back.
Okay. So. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for joining us tonight, Patrick.
Yes, to you all. And if you have any questions, Brian knows how to get ahold of me. I'd be happy to answer if there are any in the future. So thank you again for having me.
All right. I'd just like to remind everybody who's presenting and the board members that we do have a 10 o'clock curfew in place here in Columbia Heights and this meeting is actually going quite long. We have many discussion items left. I'm wondering if I need to make a motion to table any of the items or do we think we can make it?
I'll look at the, defer to Superintendent Senfik. I know you're aware of the, maybe how long these items are, knowing that we've got about an hour and 20 minutes.
And we do need to drive home, right?
My recommendation, just looking at the, in terms of governance calendar and what needs to be approved and what items are informational only, that given the fact that we're under a current curfew and it's a different scenario this evening, that we may, the board may want to consider tabling items G and H.
It just, there is a, there's an exception for people coming and going from work, which this technically is work. So they're just something else to consider as we're thinking about tabling.
Okay.
I mean, I'm definitely, you know, spoiler alert, open to it, but I do want to remind people that those exceptions exist.
Okay. All right, well, let's do this. Let's do our best to be concise as we present and as we offer our opinions. I still want to, it's a discussion, I want this to be a public discussion, but let's do our best to be concise as we move forward and then we can make a decision as we get closer to those items. So thank you for waiting it out, but we do, I would like to, you know, keep this meeting moving along. So having said that, Director Frye, Metro 916, agreement for service.
All right. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Senfik. I get an opportunity to talk about 916 Special Education Related Service Agreement. This is something that we do every single year. And Patrick had done a nice job of explaining 916, so I will skip through that. But our mission again is all belong, all succeed. We're creating worlds of opportunities for each and every learner. Our core values as related to these services is excellence and collaboration. And so the board's going to be asked to take action on this agreement on April 27th, 2021. School Board Meeting is an action item regarding providing special education-related services for students enrolled in Columbia Heights. And so I'm not going to go through 916, but here's the nice map that talks about kind of that collaborative effort that we work with 916 in supporting students and that's why we're members. They provide a lot of expertise that we cannot. Another piece to that is the special education students. They provide a continuum of service, or I should say, we as Columbia Heights provide that continuum of service. 916 provides that setting for service that we really need, which is a public day school. You can see our trend here over the course of the last four school years for our students in setting for programs. We've continued to decrease our numbers as we build efficiencies here in Columbia Heights, but also support and programming. And just want to make a point there at the bottom that we're proud to report that we have four students graduating from 916 setting for programs, which is huge. So we're very, very excited about them graduating and supporting them as they ask for their diplomas and things like that. Another piece that 916 provides is that related services and you can see a list right there. I'm not going to go through all of them. I just want to give kind of a shout out, so to speak, to our licensed school nurse as well as our school health specialist. Over the course of the last year, they've done incredible work and I just want to publicly thank them for that and to note that when we are talking to a nurse, many of them are 916 employees. Should you get a call or should you get some communication from our district nurse or your health school specialist? Again, related services, there's individual, they're specific to what the district needs as well as individual students. It allows for some flexibility in our special education programming and support. And again, just to repeat, you'll be asked to take some action on this on the April 27th, 2021 School Board Meeting. This is something that happens every year that I sign as well as the board chair. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Wow, he really took that seriously. That was a speed version. Thankfully, this is an action item we do have every year. So if you're watching at home and you're like, whoa, do they know what? Yeah, we do this one every year. But thank you, Dr. Frye, for taking us through that and congratulations on four graduates. That's great. I'm sure those graduates know who they are, so congratulations to you if you happen to watch a school board meeting, which I'm sure not a lot of students actually do. But any other questions?
Can I ask one just a quick question for clarification in the service agreement? We're not looking at adding or changing or removing or anything with our services. It's really just staying the same?
We look every year at the student need, so it's based on that. So if a student matriculates out and who has a one-to-one nurse, we don't need that service again.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Director Frye, for joining us tonight. We'll see you back at a subsequent meeting, our next one, I think, right?
Yep. Yes.
All right. Thank you. Great. We'll move on to the assessment update with Director Tuckrell and Assessment Coordinator Disa Fabik.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Senfik. Probably not going to be able to speak as fast as Dr. Frye, but.
It's okay. We want to hear your, we do want to hear your presentation.
But with a very different year, with the pandemic and different guidance that we've received from MDE and the Department of Education, we wanted to share an assessment update for this school year. So tonight, we will be sharing some assessment updates from guidance that we've had as well as our schedule for testing this school year. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And tonight, we're really focused in on our core values of excellence and integrity. This is an informational presentation, so there will be no governance question following. And with that changing guidance, our Assessment Coordinator, Disa Fabik, has been very busy. One day you'll get guidance, the next day it changes. So I'm going to pass it on to her to share what the current guidance is, knowing that it could still change.
Well, good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Senfik, members of the board. I'm happy to present this.
Hey, Disa, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're also having a hard time hearing you again. Do you have a microphone you could redirect? Again, sorry for the interruption.
Oh, is this, is this better?
It's still very soft, but if we all maintain.
Maybe try moving it a little closer, Disa, and see if it works. Your microphone piece on you. Yep, that's better.
Is this better?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, okay. Thank you, Tara. I said wonderful things. Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Senfik, members of the board. This is sort of serendipitous to talk about as we kicked off our MCA testing this year at our middle school with great success. We wanted to talk briefly about the guidance from the Department of Education, from the technical manual of the MCAs, and really highlight the need for the MCAs is really based on school and district accountability, that really this is a small piece of a student's overall knowledge and performance and should be really assessed in that way as districts look at the data. We also have, there we go, that we also have some guidance from Dr. Michael Rodriguez, who is an educational psychologist out of the University of Minnesota, and he provides a lot of guidance and understanding around assessment and really talks about, MCA's scores are not designed as a diagnostic individual level, but really a community cohort of our cohort level. So what do our schools know and how can we support those students? So really focusing in at the school level and using other pieces of data for the individual level, which is what we strive to do. So the assessment plan for this year, we've heard a lot from the Department of Education. As Tara said, we're getting lots of communication daily and weekly that this is a very unique year. So we wanted to pull the pieces out that were essential for us as educators to gauge where our students were at in literacy and in math. So this fall, we were able to give a lot of our screeners virtually successfully. We were also able to bring in a small group of our students at the high school level to take the SAT test. There were some assessments that we have postponed and that is because we have other pieces of data that we are able to utilize this year. And also, these particular assessments, we can put off a year with no harm to the student, no gaps in our understanding of where students are at, and it was the most safe version for our students at that time. So you can see in the winter, we were able to give a few more assessments to various levels, elementary, middle and high school, able to give our climate survey. And then this spring, we're planning for, again, continuation of our benchmark assessments in literacy and math. Of course, the MCA is reading, math and science, as well as the MTAS, and then some assessments at our high school level. We also wanted to give a snapshot of our current data for our students this year as opposed to last year. So we really focus on growth. That is the model that assessments recommend is not just looking at where our students are, but where have they gone? So comparing last year to this year, starting with math, we see that a lot of our students are still growing. They're making typical and aggressive growth, around 45% based on our fall to winter assessments. And we can compare those pretty longitudinally year to year. We also wanted to check in on our high schools and look at their ACT scores versus their SAT benchmark scores. We did the same thing with literacy this year. Our earlier grades, kindergarten and first grade students take a different assessment than our upper grades, second through eighth grade with Fastbridge called A-reading, just to see where is that growth occurring? And with each of these groups in a lot of the work we're doing at the PLC level with individual students, or I'm sorry, individual teacher groups meeting together at a grade level or content area and seeing where we can hone in the support and where we know our students have already made progress. So we wanted to give the board a snapshot of this, just to say, this is where we're at. We still have more data collect. As our MCA technical manual has told us, assessments are a snapshot and really need to be looked at collaboratively.
As we looked at the data and as Disa mentioned, the data does look a little different from last year to this year, but part of that is the fact that the assessments were given differently too. So we take that into account. We also have other data as we look at standards and check in on assessments that are happening in the classroom. And then we're really focusing in on how can we help support our students' needs due to the COVID pandemic? How can we support with accelerating learning due to the COVID pandemic? And so a couple of those, or a few of those things that we are planning on doing are expanding our summer programming. And that includes in-person and virtual, which we presented at a board meeting a couple months ago, but really looking at offering more opportunities in the summer, including mental health supports for students from our social workers and school psychologists, and then additional tutoring and interventions to support students in the summer as well as during the school year next year.
We also wanted to look at instructional resources to support student learning. So we have some students and families who have still opted for a virtual learning, heights from home setting versus an onsite learning setting. And so making sure that there is resources, ample resources available for all of our students regardless of the setting they're in. As I spoke before, our professional learning communities have really been strengthened and we've had some amazing conversations and dived into data to really focusing on a lens for both academics, equity and social emotional. As Tara talked about, nationwide, we're seeing these trends. And so we need to come together and really support not only our students, but our staff and our families. And then professional development has been very targeted this year for both academic and social emotional supports for our students and our community.
And with that, if you have any questions, we'll have Disa stop sharing. So if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you for that information and thanks for, it's, Disa, I think Tara sent you up for success there by saying, and these could change once again. So I just personally want to say thank you for both of your work to keep up with those changes, to not grow weary. I'm sure it's frustrating at times, but on behalf of the students and myself, thanks for keeping up on that.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members? It's okay to have questions too. Now that Mary has told us we can keep this board meeting going until the crackadon, we'll do it.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm curious, do we have the percentage of students that have opted, or students and families that have opted out of testing this year? And if so, do we know if it is significantly different? Well, I wouldn't even say significant. Do we know if there's a change between other years and this year?
Yeah, that's a great question. And are you speaking primarily to our MCA assessment or all assessments that we're looking at, like with Fastbridge or?
Disa, can you try a little moving your microphone? See if we can hear you louder. Sorry. We know you have a lot of great things to say.
Is this a little bit better?
No, we're all leaning in, which is funny because the audio's coming from speakers, but we're all like. but we're all like leaning into our computers.
I can share, Disa, while you're hearing it out.
You need to get closer to your computer. It's going through your computer.
I'm glad this is.
We're going to make some sort of late night. Yes.
That's better.
Yes.
Much better. Thank you.
We'll do this instead. My apologies.
That's okay.
No, thank you for being flexible with us.
I can share or start, Disa. Mary, as you were asking about the opt-out, this year, part of that guidance does have some different options that previous years did not have. This year, if students are choosing not to take the MCAs or not coming in person, there is a different code, and it's considered differently than opt-out. Families still have the option to opt-out if their students are coming in person, and we're still required to follow the same procedures as we have in the past with families filling out the form for each assessment they want to opt out of. And so we currently are still gathering some of those as testing has just started. So we could, we probably will have updated data in the next couple of weeks as MCAs are starting at the different schools.
Awesome. That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're stating that while MCAs are important for schools in this extraordinary year during this pandemic, knowing that there's no accountability happening with these assessments, and so, and we have other means of assessing children's growth and students' growth through fast testing, for example, that many superintendents are very frustrated that at a time where we're just getting students back on campus and wanting to embrace our students with learning that, that now we're having to pause that instruction, in-person instruction for testing. So we have made it very clear to the Commission of Education, and while that is, you know, challenging, it's also part of the federal requirement. So while it is the Minnesota assessment, it's due to a federal requirement, and Minnesota wasn't able to put a pause on that, on that assessment, unfortunately. But we did vocalize that, and just want many, many school districts in the metro area vocalize that.
I want to say, Zena, thank you so much for saying that. I really appreciate the fact that you are bringing that up and have voiced your frustration. And I, as a parent and as a, you know, in my private life, I also share a lot of those. So thank you.
And thank you, Disa, for all the hard work, because I know how much effort goes into that. Sorry.
Yeah, that's a lot of testing. And then just managing all that change. Any other questions? Comments? All right, we'll shut down that one, but we'll move on to Assessment Coordinator Disa Fabic. Is it Fabic or Fab- Fabic? Fabic.
Fabic.
Fabic. Okay. And then Director Tuckrell, for the climate survey.
Climate survey, yes. Good evening Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. This is an annual item that we share with the school board and the community, are the results of our school climate surveys. So I'm here tonight with Disa Fabic, our research and assessment coordinator. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools of creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed, and focusing in on our core values of community, excellence, and collaboration. This is an informational presentation to the school board tonight, and there will be no governance question following. Each year, Columbia Heights Public Schools gives a school climate survey to different grade levels, and Disa will be sharing more about that. But we know the importance of checking in on school climate, and the importance of having a positive school climate, and how that relates and impacts indicators such as student achievement, attendance, dropout rates, social emotional, teacher retention. So it's really important for us to keep a pulse on the school climate, both from the student view, the teacher or staff view, as well as from our family view. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Disa to share about our climate survey for this year.
Good evening Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenbik, members of the board. I hope that you can hear me better. I'm even leaning in a little myself.
You're doing great. We can hear you just fine.
Thank you. So as Tara had mentioned, we do really want to pulse on what our students, what their voices are telling us, what our staff voices are telling us, and what our family voices are telling us. And we really utilize a lot of this information gathered for supports for professional development and all of these other things. And so we wanted to show you some of the results today. And we had ample parent voice and community voice. So thank you to all of those of you who extended your time and your energy into completing this survey. Same with our staff. We had really, really high numbers of responses. Our students, it was slightly lower, especially at the elementary, because of the technology component. This was done when student, most students were learning from heights from home. And so we do have things in place to support with this in future years. Some of the students had some confusion with submitting, but we do have ample response rates to have reliable data. So we will go through that today. The categories and dimensions you've seen in the past, if you've had this presentation in the past, we've used the same company. They have upgraded slightly, so they have some questions around a virtual learning environment. They have some questions for families about social inclusion, and all of the others are the same from previous years, so we can make extensions from year to year longitudinal data. When we show some of these graphs, it's important to think about the coloring. So the darker the blue, that is the more negative response types. If it is more of a mid-color blue, that is more neutral response types, and then the lighter the blue are more positive response types for each of those dimensions. So we don't necessarily say this was negatively responded to. We say it's in the negative range of response types for each dimension. So starting with our elementary students, we had 172 participate this year, and you can see all of the dimensions and the overall score indicated for all three of our elementaries combined. And then the arrows are indicating our highest and lowest. So you can see the 3.37 was one of the lowest response area, and then the 4.22 was our highest response area. So now we're going to briefly go into each of these. What does it mean sense of social emotional security, and what does it mean respect for diversity according to the survey? So respect for diversity was the highest for our elementary students, and this is really focusing on respect for differences among students and among staff-to-student relationships. So this is all about how the students are feeling when they're virtually attending school or in-person attending school, and how they're identifying with their peers in this area. The sense of social emotional security was the lowest for the elementary student group, but I still want to draw your attention to, it was still in the neutral range. So while those students were responding sort of neutrally about their, the question and response types, that was the lowest of their domains. So this is focusing on if people are feeling safe in social emotional terms, so our elementary school students. And this is about experiencing being teased at school, or if a student's peer tries to step in to stop teasing from happening in a student group, and if there are groups that are overall left out from the student's perspective. Then we move on to our secondary, so middle and high school students. You'll see those same dimensions listed as our elementary, and we'll draw your attention to safety, rules, and norms being the highest positive, the most positive response type, and then that same sense of social emotional security being the lowest. And the sense of social emotional security has been the lowest nationwide this past year, and we're seeing that actually pre-K through college on different survey responses nationwide. So we had 574 secondary students respond to this survey, and the safety rules and norms, again, was the most positive, a 4.22, so pretty high in that positive range. And this is really focusing on the clarity of are school rules clear? Are they maintained? Is it applicable to all student groups and all students experiencing the survey? It really is going to engage that perception of consistency for which the rules are enforced. And you'll see that sense of social emotional security, again, is the lowest for our secondary, but still in that neutral range, the 3.42. Same types of questions for our secondary students. And then we'll move on to our families. And as I said, we had ample response from our families, which we are so grateful for, their voices absolutely needed and wanted. We had 176 families in the pre-K through 12 respond to this. At 4.10, we had respect for diversity being the most positive domain, and the social media being the least positive domain. This is very consistent, again, with actually several years' worth of data nationwide as social media being the lowest. We've talked about this in the past, and we'll see what type of questions that entails. So at a 4.10 median for respect for diversity, again, between student groups, they're feeling that families are experiencing this, between the school and the families, they're experiencing this respect, and they're seeing this articulated from teachers as well. Now, the social media, the median was a 3.58. So again, still in the neutral range, not in the negative range. And this is really focusing on if families are perceiving that their student is safe in a social emotional term on social media. So experiences such as if the school tried to stop online bullying or harassment between students, if the, other families are feeling that students are actually supporting each other on social media and posting positive things and trying to limit and put down harassment between students, and that is what we're seeing with our social media domain. Last but not least, we have our staff responses, and we had 253 staff respond. And sense of social emotional security was our lowest response rate at 3.41, and support for adults, social support for adults at 4.3 was our highest domain, our most positive domain. So what is that social support for adults entail? This is going to be, be focused on the quality of social relationships among adults and students. So is there trust? Is there active listening? Are staff feeling supported with each other and with their building leadership as well as with students? And an interesting thing is too, is our staff is still indicating this, even though a lot of our staff have not been able to be next door to each other, as they are typically in a typical non-COVID year. So a lot of them have been isolated from each other, but are still feeling this support. And this also gauges the perception of fairness from adults in the school, expectations for student success, making sure all students are held to a high standard, making sure students are always our main focus and our main mindset, really genuine relationships, and then also if our peers are listening to students, so our, the teacher is listening to what their student voice is telling them. We see that sense of social emotional security at the lower end of our staff response rates, still in the neutral, 3.41, but thinking about that teasing behavior, if students are stepping in, so building some of those skills in students, and if a student group is left out as perceived by the staff. So I will stop sharing if there are any questions.
Questions? I actually do have a request. Would you mind, could we get the graphics, the horizontal bars in the board packet on Friday?
Absolutely.
Okay. Having said that, thank you for all that information. It's helpful to know and glad to hear that there's still a generally positive sense of things that are happening in the school, not that we don't have things to work on, because of course we do. Other, other questions or comments? All right, thank you. Thank you for hanging in there with us, both of you, for joining us tonight. And we will move on to, oh, thank you, Extra for hanging on with us, Assistant Principal Miller and our Activities Director Jake Henderson, Activities Manager Jake Henderson. Want to get that title right, sorry.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbik. Mr. Henderson and I are going to bring the enthusiasm and excitement tonight at past nine o'clock with an activities update. Our mission here, Columbia Heights Public Schools, is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, and all succeed. Our presentation is going to focus on community and excellence and respect for our core values. And I'm going to talk about some highlights over our winter activities. The majority of our winter activities started virtually at the end of November, but later on, at the beginning of the year, past winter break, when the governor opened things back up, we did get into in practice and start competing the, I think it was the second week of January. So I'm going to talk about some highlights while I share a slideshow. If you can give me maybe a thumbs up to make sure you see what I see.
I don't think you can see our thumbs up, but we can see a winter sports 2021. Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to walk through some highlights while you guys can see some pictures. Hopefully, they will load here for you all. Just thinking.
I call this the spinning wheel of death on my computer. It's never a great sign on mine, but.
Clearly nine o'clock for computers.
I'm going to get talking, and hopefully it picks up. If it doesn't, we can share all these great photos that we have of our student athletes and students participating in extracurricular activities. So hopefully something will come up. If it doesn't, again, I'll share that out. So I'm going to start off with our theater department. Our one-act play did their first virtual theater production ever, and we competed in the section finals this year. So a big shout out to the one-act play and our, and our kiddos performing there. They did a great job. Boys' basketball, first time ever. They were the Tri-Metro Champions. They had a fantastic year. Looking forward to next year, as many of them will return. Dance, we had a great year. They did a great job of balancing practice, and they started practice before the shutdown, and then, but they, they worked through that. They worked through that. They took fourth in the conference. Very impressed with our girls in dance. Okay, I'm going to pull this back up. Sorry. Girls' basketball, we had, biggest shout out to girls' basketball. We hired back Carol Paterka, and she is doing an amazing job with our girls. She's building programming. We're excited to run lots of programming this summer with our girls and building back our program. With Carol Paterka, we also hired two other coaches that are on the high school campus. It's always exciting to get coaches that serve our kids during the day and then after school, just for touch points during the day. So excited about our girls' basketball program. Girls' gymnastics, we had a co-op with St. Anthony in Spring Lake Park this year, first time. It went very well. It created new routines. We had practice every day. We had a full schedule. And then our commute was fairly close. So that was great with our gymnastics team. Wrestling, we welcomed Billy Depes, our new head coach. And Willie Ketchmark, I'm going to shout out to Willie. He, he got fifth in the state prelims, and he just barely, he didn't make the state, but he is very close. Okay. Boys' swim and dive, had a great section meet, and the majority of the team increased their times. A shout out to Zach Severson. He placed fourth in a couple of his events. I want to let you know, if you place third in sections in your events, you go to state. So we are looking forward to seeing Zach next year in the state swimming meet, hopefully. So we are looking forward to seeing Zach next year in the state swimming meet, hopefully. Cross fingers, Natty, get him in the weight room. Okay? He's close. He was really close. So he's fun to watch. Our speech team, unbelievable, okay? They knocked it out of the park. Amara Thompson, first place, creative expression. Sophie Keether, first place for pottery. She placed third in sections. She's participating in the state meet coming up. So that's a big shout out to our speech team in our girls there. And then not, or last but not least, a shout out to my alma mater, North Park, AKA the greenest elementary in the nation. Future problem solvers, they took fourth in state. They took fourth in state. So that is, that is where I'm at for highlights. Sorry, I'm going to pull back the presentation as that's still spinning on my screen. Okay, can everybody see this?
Yep.
All right, I'm going to keep going. Next slide. Whenever you get comments about your bathroom or toilets, positive comments, it's a good thing. Jake and I, while we supervise through the winter, the most, the common denominator of of comments from parents or our community is, hey, I love the new bathroom. So a big shout out to our facilities and remodeling our main bathrooms when we host our big events at the high school. It's huge, because if, well, most of you know who attended, the bathrooms that were there before were very small, and sometimes they didn't smell very good. So this is a big bonus for the high school and for activities. Jake, take it away.
Yeah, I never thought I'd care about bathrooms so much, but they're really nice. We received a lot of comments, especially to those that have, especially from those that have been around for a long time. So a lot, a lot of comments. Mr. Miller is not telling the truth there. Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenbik, members of the Board, thank you for having me. I don't know if I'll be as enthusiastic as Mr. Miller, but I will try. We introduced live streams to many of our fall and winter events this year, and it was a great opportunity for our spectators to participate with limited access. Didn't work perfect, that is for sure. But we think we've gotten a lot of the glitches worked out, or most of them at least. And I know that our families were grateful for that opportunity to view. And I know that our opponents' families were grateful for that opportunity too. You'll see a graph here. These are several of the different events. They're kind of squished together. But we had over 21,000 views from activities just from the NFHS Network that we've been running. And some events were up to 1,500 views, which is incredible, I think. And then we also had the CHPS Activities YouTube, where we streamed some of our robotics events, as well as some of our events in the pool. And some of the events in the pool even averaged upwards to 100, 115 views, which is pretty incredible and just a really great opportunity for us to highlight our activities, as well as our school district. Mr. Miller, you want to move on? Additionally, we did a participation fees review. We compared similar districts, public districts, sorry, within our conference. And we think the data shows that here, that our fees and athletics and activities are pretty similar to those schools that are near us and that are in our conference. So for the upcoming school year, we will not be seeking to increase any participation fees, and we'll just continue to monitor this. We are on to spring activities. Those are underway. Competitions have begun. Some of them have been canceled. But that's always the case with spring. Hopefully, we can get the weather to cooperate a little bit better. The high school and Columbia Academy Theater Department will present the Wizard of Oz in May. And that's under the direction of Tara Lawrence. Many of you know her from the middle school. Home and away spectators are welcome at our outdoor competitions. And spectators will have to register. They can do that before on a form, or they can do that right at the gate or the field, just with a little QR code. Just so that we're keeping those COVID tracing, or have that COVID tracing information. And then a little bit of a, not as fun note to talk about, but just giving you a real update, is we have experienced lower participation numbers for most of our activities in athletics this year. And, you know, quite honestly, so has most of the Tri-Metro Conference in many of their activities. Many of, many of you were involved in athletics and activities as a young person, and you know how important that was in your schooling, and you remember the lessons you were taught as an adult. We know that activities are important to a child's social, emotional, and physical well-being, and we're very committed to raising participation numbers to an even greater than pre-COVID level. And I'll highlight a couple of ways we plan to increase those participation numbers here briefly. I take team with Community Ed and Jody Gadian specifically. She's done a lot of work to provide some robust summer programming offerings for our sixth through 12th graders. Matt, you can go ahead and turn to the next slide. Thank you. Additionally, I think you've heard a little bit about that we're excited to offer a summer sampler to our fourth through sixth graders. So they have an opportunity to get a small intro from Highlander coaches and student athletes to a specific sport. Really excited about those opportunities for our kids. Additionally, we are going to set specific participation goals for each program. And we are currently mapping out participation numbers at the lower levels so that we can plan accordingly. In the beginning of May here, we will be sending out a student interest survey to fifth through 11th graders, just to gather some interest, and then to create a little database for us to promote registration information specifically to those families. Not that it wouldn't be promoted to everyone, but to really reach out to those families and say, hey, you are a little, a bit interested in this, and we have our registration open right now. And then finally, in my highlight here, is we'd really like to offer athletic programming to our sixth grade students at CHPS. There's few opportunities for sixth graders to participate. Our families are really interested in this. I get comments and questions and phone calls about this every single year. And then we do think and know that it would increase our middle school participation, and over time, likely increase our high school participation as well. Currently, we only offer seventh through 12th grade athletics. And that is what the Minnesota State High School League allows for us. But we have middle school-specific athletics too, that we don't just go seventh through 12. And you can see all of those different sports that sixth graders would get an opportunity to play if we opened up registration to sixth grade. So those are all below there. Really think that would be a big addition to our middle school and then down the line to our high school student athletes. So I've highlighted a couple of specific ways that we plan to increase our participation. That's not all that we are planning. I'm continuing to work with stakeholders, coaches, families, other activities administrators on ideas for how we can, and the CHREC Department and Community Ed, for ideas on how we can increase our participation. And then finally, as we're highlighting fall of 2021, August 16th is our start date for most high school sports. And so we will be promoting that here very shortly. I think with that, that's all we've got for our activities update. If you all have any questions, please ask.
Question. It's Lorian, I see that hand.
More of a comment. I talked about this during my report earlier, but I wanted to give you guys a shout out too, just for the streaming. I think sometimes good situations come out of bad situations. And from a parent perspective of a student athlete, my kids haven't seen their aunts and uncles and grandparents since COVID began, but they have seen them. And they've seen them swimming and playing sports, the synchro meet last week. My daughter gave her grandmothers a lesson on what synchronized swimming figures meets are. So it's a really great opportunity for the kids to connect with their families, out of state, in-state, at home, and really feel that connectedness that they haven't been able to feel for over a year. So thank you for the efforts on that.
Anna, just a related question note. Is this something we intend to continue beyond COVID? Or is this like a COVID fix?
Jake, do you want to talk about the length of the contract?
Yeah, just for NFHS Network, we will have four more years of that. And it's something that our conference has, I think, all but one school now has the NFHS Network. So it's definitely something, I don't think it's ever going away. And we have the ability now in the pool to just stream those events too. So it's really a great way to highlight our activities and our whole district, quite honestly. Just an extra way.
Yeah, my parents have loved being able to tune in, especially swimming. We couldn't get in the pool, so it was good. And I'll have Zach in the weight room, I promise.
Excellent.
Other questions? Well, your bathroom conversation was, I think, what exactly we needed here. As it gets late, we were, I had to mute my mic. I started laughing.
We might have to do a tour.
The bathrooms, we haven't seen them yet. So there's some excitement down here about the bathrooms now. I saw a picture.
I can give tours next week.
Fantastic. I have not been, so I'll sign up.
All right, well, thank you for staying so late with us. And hopefully, we'll see you soon.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to the action items then, and we'll start with the termination of probationary teacher contracts resolution. And I'm going to invite Director Bennett and Director Hennigan.
Dear Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenbik. Tonight, we're here presenting the first of two resolutions for the termination of probationary teacher contracts. This resolution is for those staff members that either have a license that needs to be renewed due to being a tier one or tier two, long-term substitute positions that were on a one-year contract, and probationary teaching staff that are cut for performance. Any staff member listed on this resolution has been spoken to by either their director or principal. And we will have another termination probationary teacher contracts resolution later this spring as we finish up staffing. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of this resolution.
All right, and as we get going, I'm going to read the resolution, and then I'll ask for a motion. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teacher contracts of probationary teachers, Resolution 1. Whereas the following persons are probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13, see list below. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 13 pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5, the teaching contracts of those persons listed on page 2 of this resolution, probationary teachers in Independent School District Number 13, are hereby terminated and not renewed at the close of the current 2020-2021 school year. Be it further resolved, that written notice be sent to said teachers regarding termination and non-renewal of his or her contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be in substantially the following form. Termination, notice of termination and non-review with their name. Dear Mr. or Mrs., you are hereby notified that a regular school, regular meeting that, pardon me, you are hereby notified that at a regular school board meeting, a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 13, held on April 13th, 2021, a resolution was adopted to terminate your contract effective at the end of the current school year and to not renew your contract for the 2021-2022 school year. Said action of the Board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40 subdivision 5. And that is the resolution. So I'm looking for a motion to move forward the resolution to relating to termination of non-renewed and the teacher contracts.
So moved.
Lorian, second?
Second.
Laura? Discussion.
This is always a tough part of the year, I think, as we see the need to reduce. It's always reminded that there are real people associated with these things. So it's not an easy decision.
I think comment too, that the majority of the teachers on this list are, it's probationary. I mean, they're, it's, this is something that they knew that was coming. It's not anything additional than that. It's license need to be renewed. Reapplications can happen for many of them.
All right. Let's do a roll call vote, please.
Lewis?
Aye.
Brandlin?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer, aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to the resolution of Board of Directors Certificate of Incumbency, and that is Director Hennigan's.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Stenbik. This resolution is the OPEB Trust Resolution of Board of Directors Certificate of Incumbency. Really, it's a resolution to update our signatures related to our OPEB Trust. So that OPEB Trust was started back in 2009 to, you know, deal with our post-employment benefits. And that's held and administered by Wells Fargo. And currently, as Xena or Superintendent Stenbik is a signator on that, but it's former Director of Finance and Operations, Denise is on there. And so we need to add my name on there. So that's what this resolution will do. It'll make Superintendent Stenbik and myself as Finance and Operations Director the signators.
All right, so looking for a motion to approve the OPEB Trust Resolution of Board of Directors Certificate of Incumbency.
So moved.
So moved. Molly.
Molly, okay.
Second.
Second to Mary?
Yep.
And then I actually need to read it. So here it is. Certificate, Resolution of Board of Directors Certificate of Incumbency Regarding Authorized Entity Representatives. A corporation name is Columbia Heights Independent School District Number 13 as beneficiary of Columbia Heights OPEB Trust. I'm assuming that that's beneficiary, B-E-N-E, period? Okay, thank you. Whereas the corporation is authorized to appoint Wells Fargo Bank in a, in Wells Fargo capacity as trustee. And the Corporation Board of Director Board has delegated certain functions to individuals, Authorized Entity Representatives, to act on the corporation's behalf. To resolve that the following are Authorized Entity Representative and minimum of, if left blank, any one Authorized Entry Representative may, okay. Of them is, are required in order to take such actions and execute such documents on behalf of the corporation with respect to its agreement with Wells Fargo. Those named people are Xena Stenbik, Superintendent Brian Hennigan, Director of Finance and Operations. For resolve that Wells Fargo shall be fully protected by relying upon this resolution and shall be indemnified and held harmless from any and all claims, demands, expenses, losses, or damages, including reasonable attorney fees. losses or damages, including reasonable attorney fees related to Wells Fargo's reliance on this resolution. Five, resolve that the resolution shall replace and supersede any prior resolution on this subject in conflict herewith. Six, I certify that I am duly elected and qualified corporate secretary authorized to certify the resolution of the board, that the above is true and correct, is a true and correct copy of resolutions adopted by the board, and that said resolutions are in full force and effect and have not been repealed, amended or canceled. And seven, I further certify that the board by said resolutions has conferred on the authority entity represent, authorized entity representatives whose names appear above full authority to exercise the powers granted, and that, or that the signature appearing opposite each authorized entity representative's name is his or her authentic original signature, and that the authority of such persons may be relied upon until Wells Fargo receives further notice from me or my successor in office. And it will be signed by you, Laura, as a, as a clerk. All right, any discussion on this one? All right, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for staying till the very last. Director Hennigan's, we appreciate it. We will move on to board topics. It's like at the end of class when that kid raises their hand, remember those days in college? Uh huh, yeah, yep.
Real, real quick.
It's okay, Laura, it's okay.
Yeah. NSBA is actually having an equity symposium in July, and I would actually be interested in attending that.
All right.
I don't know if anybody else would be interested.
Xena is jotting that down, I think she'll, if I can read her mind, I'm not sure if I can, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful mind. I'm, I, I bet we're going to see information on that at some point in the future. Laura, and if you do have information that's easily accessible, would you mind emailing that to Superintendent Stenbik?
Oh, sure.
All right, well, I'm not going to be sending off any texts about how short this one was tonight, but I appreciate everyone sticking it out and making it through to the end. So we will adjourn this meeting at 9:35 PM.